At 6:35. I see no one in the audience, so we'll move right to the consent agenda. I'm going to ask that we pull the minutes of April 26th. Does anyone want to pull? And we need to pull the memorandum of understanding. So, I think the only thing on the consent agenda is the guiding principles.
I will make the motion that we accept the consent agenda to include the school board guiding principles for decision making.
I'll second that motion.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. I keep forgetting that we don't need seconds.
Oh, yeah.
Because we agreed to use the, what are they called?
Small board.
Small board. Robert's rules. So, maybe you can just take out the second, Martha.
Yeah, take me out.
I'll try not to.
Nothing personal.
The second's out?
Yes.
Yes. Right. Okay, so the minutes. I don't know if all of you have seen everything I sent out. I hope you have, because I'm not sure I can pull it up right this second, so we'll see how I can do from memory. But I'm going to suggest that we amend the minutes of April 26th. In the first paragraph, in one case, the Essex, I mean, the Westford Essex Junction Association is referred to that way. Oh, thank you. And in the second case, it's just called Essex-Westford. It's at the beginning in the fourth line. So, we need to insert junction between Essex and Westford. The second thing we need to do is in the fourth sentence in paragraph two. It should say, Martha, do you have a?
Twelve districts.
No. It should say that.
And would actually, you would be striking out under his guidance. Dan has experienced the formation of a, you're inserting, Dan has a red as one of his districts. Then you wanted a period, and then the next sentence is going to say, his present SU has 11 districts and 54 school, 54 board members.
Right.
Is the change you sent to me.
Right. So, that's what that should say. And then, the next change is in the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, there are two figures there that have periods instead of commas. So, it should be 20,500 and 10,500. And then, the final change is in the paragraph that starts the task teams. There was a piece there that didn't make sense.
It was actually the following paragraph.
No, it's the next one. Update. Right. Thank you.
It's right where the strikeout of principal. Mark had given some changes in that strikeout, where the strikeout is through the principal. That shouldn't even be there. And then, where it goes into leadership teams, Keely wanted school staff too.
I just thought school staff too didn't make sense.
It doesn't.
It could just be taking out the two.
Well.
But I wasn't sure what was intended originally.
I don't think it was school staff. I think it was administrative staff. So, I was suggesting we take out the three, or school staff too.
And probably the and, if you want it to be word correct.
Yes. You're right. Yep. It should just be, right. Thanks. Take out those four. Is there anything else on the April 26 minutes? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I move.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Opposed, say nay.
All right. And now, we'll move to the transition memorandum of understanding. We will see that in the first paragraph, outside the box, that the change we made last time did get made. You will see that Chris Leopold has suggested that we change what was the second paragraph into two paragraphs, and that we be clear about who's entering into this agreement, and who the party saw her, and then, the piece about the purpose of the agreement. So, there's some language added there that is, I would say, clarifying. Any questions about that?
No.
Any comments about the memorandum of understanding at this point?
Just that it's interesting that we are technically not party to the agreement.
School board?
No.
And turned into by and between school boards of?
No.
And superintendents.
Our board is not mentioned and is not among the signatories, which.
Oh.
I mean, maybe that's intentional, because we are not operating anything right now?
It was corrected. You know what? I think where he says.
Westfield school board.
And the two superintendents of the above referenced school districts and supervisory union. Aren't we a supervisory union now?
No, we're unified.
We're a school district.
We're a school district.
I think when we added the paragraph, we probably cut.
I don't think we were in it before, because we're not in the list of people signing.
Because this is about how the two existing districts are going to work together during this transition. But that would need you to ask, why are we approving this?
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I would think that we should be involved in this, since the superintendents are supposed to be informing us about the work, but.
Or that we should be agreeing to this document, that they're going to be doing all this work on our.
And that therefore be a signature.
I think we should add us. I think we should add this body, in my opinion, because otherwise, where's our authority to instruct these superintendents as this entity to do anything?
You know what? I think we should table this. I think we should bring this issue back to Chris. I think it, as I look at it more carefully, oh, it does have to be signed by the chairpersons of all the boards except for this one.
Yeah.
So, I don't, either we shouldn't be approving it, or we should be part of it.
Judy, do you recall seeing a signature line for the chair of this UU board?
Yes.
I think that came up at one time.
Oh, so it's on, it just didn't get printed?
It was already corrected, and what I think is when he added the paragraph.
It just pushed it down?
It pushed it down. It should be on there.
If we're adding the. No, it wasn't on the last version that was sent out to us preparing to this meeting.
But then we corrected it.
We did correct it at one point.
Right.
So, who?
But we can ask Chris again.
We will.
I think we need to table and get it right. Okay?
We would agree.
And I don't want to wordsmith it right here. I don't think there's any reason to. Do people agree?
The only question I have, Martha, is if this needs to be signed by all local board chairs. We want to make sure. I know we have a meeting in June after our May meeting, but I don't know about the other boards, so if that is a timeline consideration.
We have a carousel meeting in June.
Okay.
So, we'll all be at the same meeting, so, okay? Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. So, school board business. Let's move to that. And we're going to do work plan development.
Can I ask that we change the order of this? Because Sue McCormick is here to give the update on the Nellie Mae, and ask that she, since she's here now, could we start with that?
Mm-hmm.
And not have her sit through?
Yep. So, just let me finish framing it, and then we'll do that. That'll be great. So, we wanted to work on the work plan, which we've been trying to do for a couple of meetings now, and it has each time fallen off at the end. So, and the work plan is really structured around our task teams. So, we have a separate item tonight on contract negotiations. So, in this piece, we're going to talk about communication and public engagement. We're going to talk about policy, although it may not be clear from that agenda item. And we're going to talk about the superintendent search. So, let's start with the Nellie Mae grant and an update on that. So, Sue, welcome. Why don't you bring your chair up to the table?
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Sue.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you all. Hi. Welcome back.
Do you want to?
Turn the microphone over to you for our tan.
There we go.
So, Liz and Keely, do you guys want to say anything to start this off?
If you want. Well, I could. We invited Sue here to give the update on the grant. Sue and her colleague Alex Cartagena from Everyday Democracy were in town last week and kicked off the on-the-ground part of the Nellie Mae phase with some in-school meetings. And all of the five of us have worked on a plan that we're going to just lay out briefly for you tonight, and Sue is here to do that.
Great. So, hi, everyone. It's really nice to see you again. And just as, to set the context, as you know, Nellie Mae, the education foundation, is funding communities throughout New England to develop their capacity for effective and inclusive community engagement. And they feel that that's essential if schools are going to make successful transitions to the kind of personalized learning that is called for in Vermont legislation, Act 77. And in general, they fund very high-need communities. Our community didn't exactly fit the profile, but I made the case for it, because I think we're at a really important moment, where we had this opportunity, where these districts are coming together. And I know that many of the schools are also working on personal learning and flexible pathways and those kind of school innovations. So, there's a lot of need to engage both the internal and external school community, and there's a lot of opportunity here, too. And so, Nellie Mae was interested in that and said yes, and so, we're just beginning our work here. And we are thinking of the work here in three different phases. So, the first phase that we're in right now is really a phase of getting the lay of the land, starting to build some relationships. And we're going to be in this phase from now through the summer. The second phase will take place between, hopefully, September and November, and this is a phase where we're going to be planning, and then, beginning in the new year, we'll be in an implementation phase. And in this first phase, what we've just done is we've just spent a couple of days talking with 50 people, students and staff in all of the schools. We had great conversations. I think we're already learning some things that could be very useful, both to the board and to school leaders, about people's kind of hopes and anxieties about what's happening. Alex and I already feel we have some recommendations that we can make around some next steps that could be helpful to you guys. And we're coming back here in next week, and we're going to be having some more in-depth conversations with teachers from across the district, students, and some families. And once we have all of those meetings, we'll be writing up a summary of that, along with some recommendations of some immediate next steps. But the larger, long-term purpose of this activity is to really inform the kinds of goals and activities that an engagement coalition decides to do. And so, between now and the fall, we're hoping that many of the people we are talking with over the next week or so are going to be invited to join a diverse coalition that includes students, family members, parents, and school staff, to hear some of people's hopes and concerns, whether they feel they have a voice right now and how they'd like that to look. And using some of that information, that coalition will be charged with setting some engagement goals, which could be short-term goals, activities. It could also be long-term, more policy goals around how the new districts wants to approach engagement. They'll identify a set of activities, and then, in the new year, we'll start to support the community as they implement those activities. So, I think that's the quick update, and I guess we'll pause and see if people have questions about what we're doing.
Questions?
I have a comment. Go ahead, if you have a question.
I just had one question. There are a lot of families, and when I think of the high school at 1,300, tech center at 400 to 500, multiply that number times two with two parents. The scalability and the education, are we on the right track for these kinds of communications? Or do we need to take a different tack in order to reach everyone?
You mean, the kinds of work that we are personally doing, or the work of the board?
That you're doing.
That we're doing. Well, we are doing, the scale of the work that we're doing now is definitely not large enough to kind of hear all voices. We're trying to identify some early themes and patterns that could inform the work of the coalition. The coalition might decide that what's needed is a really significant, large-scale engagement at this moment in the community's history, and so, that's something that we would be working with the coalition to develop strategies and ways to do that. And in other communities, that could look like a combination of a survey, community dialogues, opportunities at open houses and other existing events for people to learn more. So, there's a whole bunch of strategies that we can suggest. Some of them are already familiar to our community, but until the coalition comes together and establishes some goals and figures out what the priorities are, we will, we're doing this on a little smaller scale, just to kind of get the lay of the land.
Okay. Sounds good.
And for the next week's meetings, we're entertaining options. Sue has been in touch with Bob Travers about CTE families in particular, and possibly could result in some home visits instead of getting people out. So, we're really trying to be intentional about who is in the room.
Good.
And then, one other thing that I'll just say, that we're also helping with, the high school has expressed an interest in doing a forum around proficiency-based grading. And we've been working with, we're meeting with Rob Riordan in a couple of days, and we're just helping with the design of that meeting to make sure that it has some of the principles and best practices of good engagement embedded into it, and so, we'll be helping to facilitate that meeting as well.
That's helpful, because I think it's a little confusing about whether that is the grant work or not the grant work. So, thank you for that clarification.
It's kind of similar to facilitating the inaugural board meetings, which I had the privilege to do. And Nellie Mae has been, I think, really wise in giving us about six months to do whatever early work that we think is needed in the community, to start to build relationships and give people a sense of what it looks like to do this work well. And so, they've given us a lot of flexibility around how we spend our time, and so, this seemed actually like a good opportunity to us. That's a hard topic to talk about in communities, and so, we wanted to lend a hand and see if we could help frame that in a productive way.
Well, thank you. I think that is helpful. So, Liz and Keely, you may have talked to Sue about this, but at our last meeting, as we discussed governance, we started talking about an idea of trying to create a student outcomes policy before the district begins operating on July 1st, 2017. So, I think another piece that will go with all of this is how do we best think about and conduct the community engagement involved in that?
Right.
And what's the best timeline, given what you're doing? So, you know, we'll be looking to, Keely and Liz, to help us think that through. Over the, I don't think there's a rush, but I think by the fall, we should start to have an idea of what that process is going to look like.
And so, I think you have a couple of choices there. You can bring that forth to the coalition, saying, this is something that we suggest, given the context. Or you could, that could be something that you just go forward with and make sure the coalition is informed that that work is happening. So, that's a timing question and a capacity question. But certainly, one of the important things that we'll want the board to do, maybe Liz and Keely will be the ones that help with this, is to provide that coalition with a really good understanding of the context and what's happening right now, so that they can make wise decisions about setting priorities, because there's a lot of need for engagement right now. And so, it'll be, I think, a hard part of this will be prioritizing that. So, having the context will be really important.
So, that brings up the fact that the other community engagement that will be going on over the fall months as well, I would expect is some engagement around our superintendent search. So, just another piece to keep in mind.
Right.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Mark has one.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Nice to see you again. So, I'm wondering if you could just help me understand that the role of the coalition in this document is to help inform the development of an engagement plan, right? So, I'm wondering, is this, does the coalition go away at some point? Do they pass a baton? Do they work in concert with a subcommittee of the board or the board with some of these bigger things that we need to try to accomplish? Just wondering, it gets back to that roles and responsibility. Is it a short-term thing, but is it stay on?
Right.
I don't know. At what point does the board get involved in a more direct way with the engagement plan?
So, I would hope that the coalition includes board members.
Okay.
Maybe beyond Keely and Liz. I think it would be good to have really good representation from the board, since it's, my understanding is, one of the board's key roles is to be that connection to the community.
And it started with those of us who attended Norwood. So, you might actually be a coalition member already yourself.
Remember that day in Norwood.
I think we signed up.
We did. I'm sure that.
So, the way we've been thinking about this grant, this grant is a three-year opportunity, and communities apply every year. And so, the way we've been thinking about it is, the first year is really the planning year, the second year is an implementation year, and the third year is a year to really think about, what will it take, what did we learn? What went well? And what would it look like to really embed this kind of way of doing business into the infrastructure of our system? And so, I think that the coalition could be a three-year kind of chunk of time now. In another community in Vermont that we're working in, at the end of the first year, the coalition is already making a shift and thinking about some different roles. So, I would say that the coalition that we pull together will probably be as it is for at least a year or so, and continuing to reassess its role, and it could be something that goes away and is replaced by some other thing it recommends, or it could, you know, change into something new and continue on. So, I think that would remain to be.
Okay. Thanks. That's helpful.
Could you give a hypothetical outcome of what something could look like after going through, going through the process?
Sure. I can talk, just quickly, about some work I've been doing in Washington West Supervisor Union. And so, they had a coalition that included a lot of school leaders, some community members, parents, teachers. And given what they were working on, they came up with a set of three goals, and they were big goals. One was to make sure that the voice of community and students and parents is, that they created a culture where the voices of those people were embedded in how the district functioned. Another goal was to find out what the shared values were that the community held around the purpose of education. I might not be saying these exactly right. And a third goal was to develop a shared understanding in the community about some of their personalized learning work. So, those were their three big goals. And to accomplish those, they've taken on, really, actually, a very ambitious set of activities. They had some movie discussion nights, featuring the movie Most Likely to Succeed. They did a community survey, and they had a really robust series of community conversations where small groups of community members met once a week for four weeks, so they spent eight hours together, talking about the future of education in that community. And as a result of that work, they've come up with some, a list of very specific action steps. And now, I'm actually meeting with the coalition in a couple of days to help them decide what role they want to play in helping to move this work forward. So, that's an example of what one community did. I think here, the complicating factor and opportunity is that in that community, they were really looking at it around teaching and learning, and here, we have an opportunity to look at engagement around teaching and learning and governance as well. And so, I don't know what the goals will look like here, but it's important, from our perspective, that the goals are co-created by a diverse group of people, because that's kind of one of the principles of inclusive, effective engagement, is not to have it be a top-down thing imposed, you know, but to have it be a collaborative, collaborative process, which, in my understanding, is really important to the success of a lot of the school innovation that's happening around student-centered learning. It requires a level of collaboration and engagement that maybe wasn't present in the old way of doing things.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I think it's thank you for the work.
Yeah.
Kim.
Thank you for helping us learn from the process and experiences of others, because when I think further out and think about how this becomes embedded in long term, I'll look forward to sort of seeing how that is evolving in other communities, whether it's advisory councils. There are, there are rules that are defined by the ALE in that chart that really, I don't think exist yet, so there's not really a model. So, I can imagine that, however this becomes part of the culture, maybe there are tools that have been spoken to but not developed yet, that we can think about or learn from somebody else.
I have to say, my colleague Matt Linegar, who's written a bunch of great books about this and has doing some work with the municipality, is really interested in helping develop some of those tools, and so, I think we have a lot of great resources to bring to this. And can I just say one final thing before I leave? I just want to say, this is really hard work to get your mind around. So, it's not like the community coming together to build a playground or do something really tangible, and so, it takes a while for this to sink in and for people to get kind of comfortable with what this is. And so, I just always like saying that, because if you're kind of struggling to get it, it's okay, and that's really just part of the whole process.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks. It's great to see you all again.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. Take care.
Chris, Sue.
So, Keely and Liz, do you have anything else to talk about in terms of your task teams?
I don't know if this is the time to talk about the STIPEN, and Ben, is it?
We're going to do the budget in a couple minutes, so let's do it then.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. But I do think that one of the things. But I do think that one of the things you will need to start thinking about is that student outcomes policy and what kind of timeline might make sense and how you figure out the engagement piece based on this other work that's happening.
Yep.
And your mention of the superintendent search is also on point, because whatever we're doing in the fall, if we can contribute to soliciting values that people want to see in the school leadership, or sharing how it's going, or whatever, asking and sharing information that you want around that.
And so the only other thing I would add is that we worked to find out what legally we could do as a committee. And we went back and forth with Keely and VSBA and Martha and determined, Marla, that our meetings do need to be warned and therefore we can't just meet with Sue and Alex when they're in town. And we've, so we're, to be clear about it, we've decided to warn meetings from now until the end of the school year, the day before these warned meetings. So it's going to be the first Monday and, the first and third Monday of each month, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., possibly at your office, if that's okay, to avoid any other complications. Because that's, and we are, and we'll get this out to you once that, is that okay? To meet, to plan to meet at central office? If we could plan on that, it'll be a standing meeting from 8:00 to 9:00, Monday mornings, the day before. And we're working on the legal, how to warn that and everything. Martha, thank you for figuring that all out for us. And now we know what we're doing, and that's what we'll do.
But it's probably also instructive to the other task teams, that if you're an official subcommittee, you can't get together and talk about this.
Right. And you do have to keep minutes, and they do have to be posted.
We did determine that posting on...
They have to be elaborate.
And sending them to Keely and posting them on our site suffices for public posting of minutes.
Of subcommittees?
Of subcommittees, yes.
Great.
That's, okay.
I think as we're all doing these committees, not knowing it's new and how much work, I think it's a great idea, maybe all the committees should plan a day, a time, and it's easier to cancel the meeting than to get a warning out.
Well, yeah, we'll figure that out. But I do think you're, that's certainly what CCSU did with their task teams, and that was successful. But each group will have to figure out what, how much time they think it's going to take and so forth. So, good. So let's move to policy. Mark, did you want to help the policy testing?
There they are, to my right.
Yes, that's right.
Alan, Wes and Diane. I have a, I was hoping to do a quick tunnel with you folks tonight, and maybe if not tonight, then tomorrow, before tomorrow's annual meeting. I've got a package of information that I was going to share with you, mostly the 27 mandatory policies, and have drafted and framed sort of what our work might look like over the next several months. So not to take time tonight, but I would want to meet with them separately afterwards, if that's okay.
So the timeline wasn't very, there wasn't much on the timeline under policy. So I think as you start to frame your work, I think you can fill in the timeline in the board's work plan, based on what you're doing. But your plan is to start with the 27 mandatory?
Mm-hmm. 27 mandatory policies. And again, I'm sorry, we haven't had a chance to talk, and these are just some drafty ideas. But if we had the time, and to start also thinking about bringing back to the full board some ideas around student ends policies and how we interface with the Communications Committee to do that, to talk about the monitoring and the evaluation of superintendent performance, what might a policy look like in that regard? To think about board governance, not in terms of a model, which we've been talking about, but more about roles and responsibilities of board members. And do we need policies to talk about the investment we need to make in the governance? How we act at the table? Should we have policies that define that? And finally, in light of the FY18 budget work, do we want us to think about drafting a policy that directs the superintendents and the administration with the board and the development of FY18? And along with that, what, how do we make sure we're protecting our assets in terms of our, the budgets that we do have? And what do we need a policy to think about holding us accountable as superintendents to make sure that those assets are protected? So those are some ideas I just wanted to float by you without, you know, we're not empowered to make those decisions, but to bring back to the full board recommendations outside of the mandatory policies, which is not pro forma, but in some ways that work has been done for us. They're already established.
But, but it does need to come to us.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, it's a good idea to remind us of what it is and to formally adopt them. We need to do that. Judy?
It's helpful to understand, too, your expectations as a board as far as what you receive and how the committees work. So for example, should those 27 mandatory policies, which are mandatory, is that something that the full board should have access to? And should it be on your site somewhere? So that, because it's a question I have around negotiations as well. So what is it, because this board doesn't have any negotiated agreement? So we're starting from scratch, the same with, there is no policy manual, so you're starting from scratch? And that's unusual, because usually you come in and have those things in advance. So I'm just trying to understand the communication flow of documents so that the whole board has that opportunity to see the materials, although the work of the committee with any suggestions then comes to the board via an agenda.
So my personal preference in regard to these mandatory policies, and please disagree with me, would be for them to come forward as they're coming forward on an agenda. So maybe at the first policy meeting, they do three of them, or four of them, or whatever, and then they'll be coming to the board for approval. So I'd like the board to see them at that point. Now, if you want to put them on the board website, just so people can know what's coming up, that's fine. But I'd like the focus to be when they're coming before.
And we have, part of our charge is to figure that out. You know, what is the process for our own internal review as a committee? But also, how do we engage the full board within this integrated, by integrated into the work plan? I mean, being really strategic in terms of here, moving forward from May 2016 to June 2017, where do we position, where do we start and when do we bring it forward to the board? I mean, one of the more interesting policies that we'll be discussing is the transportation policy. And having spent two hours with Mountain Transit staff today, at some point, I'd want to inform the policy committee about sort of our current contract agreement with Mountain Transit and how we, how we go about figuring out what we do in the future in terms of the internal procedures around identifying where, who gets a ride to school. I mean, the policy's the policy, but the devil is in the, how do you make those decisions about your geographic location? So that'll be probably a policy that rises to the top pretty quickly. It should, I think it should be, because it's going to take, you're smiling. I guess you all understand, probably because the Essex Report does such a great job of publicizing what happened last fall. But you know what I mean? We'll have to, we'll have to probably go through some prioritization. Animal dissection, the needs of high schools notwithstanding, that probably would not be a priority compared to, because that's a mandatory policy compared to transportation.
Okay, so I've got Keely and Andre.
It's a good point that Judy has made, yeah.
Right.
To speak to Judy's point, I, if we wanted to post things on the website to share with only members of this group, I have figured out how to share things with people who have a board.ewsd.org address, but not with other people. But I would check with Vince to make sure that everything was secure if we wanted to be sharing documents that were not yet beyond a draft stage or publicly shared.
Okay.
So that's technically possible.
Through a Google site?
Yeah. Well, just, and through the website, you can put Google Docs on a sharing mode that when someone clicks on it, they aren't logged into a board.
We can't do it.
I hope I can figure it out.
Andre? We're starting from scratch with the policies, but I surmise that some of these policies might already be in existence, and we're just going to...
They all are.
Okay.
Mandatory.
I would advocate having them available, to see them, and then see the changes. Because I was on a subcommittee with the policies in, on the CCSU, and they were all there. We were working with them. And it allowed the board members to actually visualize the changes as they were made. But to present them for first reading without having them available before, doesn't give us the, where we're coming from.
They are available.
Well, and what I was, that's, what I was suggesting was, when they were going to come forward to the board, that, you know, that's when we would really focus on...
The 27 mandatory policies are, you can read them on the VSBA website. If you go to VSBA...
We don't have a site as of yet.
We haven't prioritized them, but those required, they're on there, and if you read them.
Kim and Diane?
And then I would just say, too, since we both districts already have the mandatory policies, any variations might be because some had been reviewed more recently than others. But I think we probably all would have been going from what was then the best recommended language that the VSBA had provided. So their manual had been updated this past December. So there's going to be some that might not be as current as their most current information. If we were going from each of our mandatory policies to try and craft something, we wouldn't be taking the most recent information available. And they've incorporated all the legal references that would be as current as, I think, December. So it's probably a better place to start than figuring out which words are similar or dissimilar between our two mandatory.
There's no point.
So what I have for the committee is all the mandatory hot off the press. They are the most current, just to avoid, because I think that we have, our, I think that Judy and I have operated and Mike the same way, that it's, these policies have been vetted by people, we don't typically wordsmith those, because it's, I think we might flub it up. So these are all off the VSBA website.
Mark, is it fair to say that as we plow through the policies and changes, we adopt them as a board, but they, you don't take any action until July 1st?
July 1st.
Transportation would guide our work.
You're not going to have some new ones and some old ones you're going to have.
So we don't have a vehicle that'll actually be lodged on, such as our own website, until July 1?
Well, Judy, we should talk about what that, how we do that.
We're going to adopt them as we go along. They just won't be operational until July 1st, 2017.
We want to approve them as we're going along.
Yeah. We don't want to wait till the last minute. Diane?
I was going to say that, after the conversation here, is that the policies that are hot off the press is that, yes, you, they could get posted, I mean, if you wanted to put links. I mean, for that matter, links to CCSU and Essex Towns, you know, could all be there at the same place if we all wanted them. We just put, put a posting of those links to there if you want to go. I mean, it's...
I think it would make more sense to just post what we adopt. Nobody's using these right now. I would feel very differently if parents needed to go there to find out an answer to the question. But the fact is, they don't. They need to go to the Essex West website and the CCSU website. So I, I think it makes sense to post them as we adopt them.
So, well, the only other thing I would interject is that we could indeed put working drafts up there if people wanted to see and see what we were crafting at the moment. So I mean, it's, so that it's not...
At least for board access.
Yeah, it's for board access.
Yeah.
And certainly, leave as they're warned, we need to have the document available anyway, as part of the agenda. So it's not from a secret standpoint, it's just simply that as you guys are choosing the priority, that these will come to us. And maybe at that point, also making sure with administrations that they can be operationalized, like, you don't have to write the procedures now, but that you're not seeing anything in the mandatory language that is not in keeping with what we can envision the procedures to work like in our districts. Because I would think otherwise, there's not too, too much crafting happening, but more a consideration for the order that we're looking at it and sort of an anticipation that we believe that that can be operationalized in our districts currently and keep with the legal, you know, language that they've shared.
Okay. I think we need to wrap up this discussion, Mark, and then Al, and then hopefully we can be done.
So one more thing we'll talk about, and we want to engage Judy in the conversation. In addition to the 27 mandatory policies, I mentioned four that we might want to think about. But there's another set of policies that I think, even though they're not mandatory, they would be probably highly recommended. For instance, we have, and I'm sure Judy does at the high school level, a search and seizure policy. Not mandatory by the state of Vermont, but you better well have a search and seizure policy at middle level up. And so Judy and I, I think Judy would come into the conversation as appropriate, based on developmental needs of kids. Not to go crazy with policies, because we don't want to mire ourselves in policies that aren't really have utility, but search and seizure is a good example of, we want one of those. So it might be 27, but we won't, we might want to add several more.
And are those, would that be, Mark, under the recommended? Do they have language for that under recommended?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because there's like that middle category, recommended, and then the also ranked or whatever.
There's the required, and I think it says recommended.
It says recommended, and then the third column is...
It's consideration or something.
Yeah.
But anyway, we'll, we'll join you. You can join us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Al, what did you want to say?
I wanted to ask him a question.
Yeah?
Based upon your thoughts and your experience, would you suggest that the procedures or a sketch of the procedures be included with the policy?
You know, they, I don't, we don't want to approve procedures as a board.
No, 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 no.
So they can be referenced, and they should live someplace. And it's handy, if they live someplace, that they could be clicked on, in my mind. I would envision it to be a click on separately. I think we could defer to our superintendents. But we don't want to confuse people if the procedures are on that same document. They, that's different, I think, than approving policy and having an easy link that falls right beneath with procedures that is the domain, in my mind, of the superintendent and administration and staff.
Should we present that to the board at...
I don't know. I think we could see what, I don't know how...
I can, I, I think we have to be careful, because the procedures are the work of the administration. And I think part of what your committee should discuss, and Judy and Mark will need to discuss, is how they want to go about doing that and how it will link to your work. So I don't think we should decide that tonight. I think Mark and Judy need to have a discussion, and then your committee needs to talk about it.
Coincidentally, I mean, it's a good point, Alan, and on this, it says draft. Draft sort of framework is, is to have a role in what procedures we do have. I do think having those assembled does make sense. Like, there are some mandatory policies, like hazing, bullying, harassment, that they have, they've vetted a really good set of procedures. That, but we use those, because why come up with something that's been vetted by the ALE? But most policies say, and a superintendent shall, creates procedures. And so I think when you think about monitoring and evaluating a superintendent in the future, you want to have an accountability mechanism built in so that we can demonstrate that we, so, whether it's our body of work or not, these next seven, eight, nine months, I do think it's appropriate not to debate the procedures, but to know they're in place. That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm right on. Right on target. Thank you.
All right. So let's move on to the superintendent search. And if you pull up the board work plan, you will see that, I guess Al and I were the subcommittee, right? We were pretty clear in the timeline that we came up with. And, but, but I think that timeline might need to be modified. So I'd really like to talk this through tonight. So, and I think there's a piece that needs to be added to the timeline, and that is the discussion of what are we looking for in the superintendent? So I would say that needs to take place before or concurrent with deciding a process. So I'd, so we need to do those two things. We were advised by Val Gardner, who was walking around that night. That we should probably be advertising in October, interviewing in November, and making a job offer in December. If we want to be in the right timeframe for finding somebody good. So knowing that, what do folks think about? What should we move the process back a month?
What should we do?
Should we move?
The process.
Deciding on a process, should we move that back to August? And at the same time, my question is, what do folks think about? When should we start the discussion about what we're looking for in a superintendent? And do we want Dan, someone like Dan to help us with that discussion? Or do we want to do it on our own? So who, what do folks think?
I, personally, from having, having recently gone through a superintendent search. And Brian O'Regan, who was in the position that Dan's going to have at St. Mike's. Brian O'Regan was in charge of the process of the superintendent search. And there was a committee, and I thought it went very well. I thought extremely well, you know, they picked, like, I think it was ten people. They had the correct size. So I think Dan would be a valuable person to have there. I think watching Brian work and what I heard back from committee members that were on the committee with him. Is having someone like even a Sue McCormick. It takes some of the anxiety out or some of the differences of opinions. You've got someone there.
Who can negotiate that. So I don't want to make a decision about the process tonight because we have options. Just to lay them out, the V S B A can be contracted. I'm sure there are a number of consultants who can be contracted. Maybe Judy and Mark and Dan will have other ideas of what we should consider. What I'm asking tonight is when? When should we be having those discussions? And when should we be having the discussion about what we're looking for? And do we want to have that discussion after we've hired somebody to work with us or before? So that, that's, Diane, thank you.
I'm thinking we should literally have a minor discussion before we hire someone. And then definitely have an in-depth discussion after we have someone to help us work through this. And I'm thinking the timeline, knowing how long things take to crank through. I'm thinking probably either starting late June or definitely late, late July. And, and the reason why is because unfortunately it's vacation time. So, and if things take longer, but if we.
We're not going to meet in July.
Pardon?
Well, I don't, my plan is we're not meet in July. Boards don't usually.
No, I think we need to start next month. If we're not meeting in July at all. Because if you move the process up to August, you need something to go with it. I mean, you can't start the process until you've got what are you looking for.
Well, when I say process in August, I mean, making a decision about who's going to do it. Who we're going to hire to help us do it. That's what I mean by process. And who we hired to help us do it. They'll each have recommended processes is what I would envision. So to some degree, will, when we hire somebody, we'll be agreeing with them to a process. I've got Keely and then Kim.
I have two questions, actually. One is when we're thinking about what we're looking for in a superintendent, is that something that we want to engage the community on? As we were talking about earlier. For instance, asking for like what their ideal superintendent would look like or qualities they really appreciate in a leader or something. To inform our superintendent search so that we don't feel like we're bringing a decision that's already made. To people who are a little on edge about decisions being brought already made. And the other question would be, we've heard a lot about how few qualified candidates there are for superintendent positions in Vermont. If we want to be able to expand the scope of our search to include candidates from neighboring states or what have you. Does the same timeframe apply? Because I know in some fields it varies from.
No, I think, I think school years are pretty standard. So I think the timelines are pretty standard. Would you agree?
I don't, I don't know the question time is in terms of when you go out and start looking.
Like, do, do people looking for superintendent jobs in Massachusetts also put their name in the ring in September and get interviewed in October? Whatever the timeframe is.
I think it's, I don't know, I don't know the answer. I think it's typically the fall when people start thinking about it. But it's not, I would agree that the sooner the better, but.
Usually, all of us are under contract. And so it, it would be in the fall if we'd start looking.
I, I think it is fairly standard. As to your other point, in our superintendent search, one of the things that Brian O'Regan did. Was to conduct some engagements, both a public engagement with community as well as engagements. And I don't remember exactly how they were done, but with faculty and staff. As part of the process. So I think we need to have the discussion, but I don't think that precludes other folks from having the discussion.
That would be able to happen in the fall led by.
Yes.
Right.
Whoever we hire. I think I've got Kim.
Kim.
No, I, I think probably Keely hit on my question for now in terms of timeline. But definitely the engaging with our community around what they're seeking. You know, what they value in an educational leader for our community, I think would be important. And whether that's a low, you know, low impact, or I'm going to get the wrong words. But even if we wanted to begin touching on that before, to inform our thinking, even in a survey. And it makes me wonder, like, could we have like a survey of the month club or something? That we've got so many things coming that you don't want people to be survey weary. But what if they knew that we had this sort of, we're going to be asking you guys questions every month and they're going to be topical or, obviously for you guys. But it just got me thinking.
It works well on some websites to have.
Yeah, to have like a, I don't know, because it just feels as though if we're talking about it as a board, what we're looking for in an educational leader. I'd want to be checking my assumptions because so much of what a superintendent does is as an interface in our community. To be sure it's, we've not missed something that we think in our world is most critical. But may have totally left out something that was obvious to everybody else. Just a thought. So, and that might need to happen earlier than August, but I don't know, maybe not.
It's so late now.
Yeah.
Sort of done, probably.
Sorry, I didn't.
Reinforce Keely's point about gathering that information. It's so critical. I was on the C T E director's search and there were, to me, two critical things that we did. One, well, three, the, the engagement, three, the building a filter. These are the qualities that we're looking for. Because we started getting replies from all over the country. So you've got to have a filter to, to start off with. And the third thing was, in fairness to the candidates, the questions were the same questions asked of every candidate. And that was a fairness issue.
Yeah. I, I'm worried about that piece. The more we talk, the, the more I think, and please disagree with me if you do. The more I think we need to hire somebody first. Who can help us figure out how to do this engagement and where we fit into that process. Kim.
I think Marla was first.
I, I agree with you. I think with everything else we're faced with and just knowing how many meetings is taken for the understanding agreement. The memorandum of understanding. That if, if we put off and do engagement later, then is that going to make a difference? Who we're, what we're asking for when we advertise? And the other concern I have, which I'd like to hire somebody to walk us through this, what's our budget? Because our superintendent search is going to come out of transition money. And I, I can honestly tell you, I've had people in the community saying to me, who's it going to be? Mark or Judy? And when I've said that we'll probably go out for a superintendent search, the people I've said this to me have said, are you crazy? You're going to be spending your money when you got two great people. So, you know, I think that's something else that as you're engaging the community, I.
So.
I think there's a.
So that's a discussion we'll have to have as well.
Arthur, we could, you know, I don't, and Judy and I are in a, obviously a different, we're in a, we don't want to be in an awkward role, position either. I think there might be times where maybe we're not at the table when you're talking about this, just because it is, it could become sensitive quickly. So, because it's not about Mark and Judy, it's about getting the right person as we know as we go in the future. But we are sitting superintendents and, you know, we don't know what our, you know, I can speak for myself, who knows what the, what the, what it's going to look like in a couple of years here. But I would, I would agree that hiring someone or identifying someone sooner than later, I think, would be a really good idea. And it's a really good investment of the resources, albeit limited, that you have. And there are good search consultants and there's people who are not as good. So I also think there would have to be some sort of vetting process, so you just don't get a person with a nice smile and a strong pulse. I mean, I think you'd want to look at someone who's really been demonstrated, has demonstrated. You mentioned a couple of fellows who would do probably a good job. But availability is something also that we'd have to be cognizant of. So the sooner we can, I would just relate, jump on that one pretty quickly. Judy and I could help, but maybe it'd be more appropriate for a board member to do that.
Maybe that's something we ask Dan to help us with. And if he wants.
I think he said he would help in some way, didn't he?
He said you're interested in his services.
Yeah.
You know, we can include it. So I think you have three choices. You have V S B A, you have Dan, and our educational, what's it called now? Service, it used to be C V A.
Through Lawrence outfit?
Lawrence, it's our.
Champlin Valley Educational Development Center.
There you go.
Yeah.
They are also offering that service. So maybe it's because it's the two of you on it that you can interview or learn more about their processes and what you think would most fit the needs for this.
Yeah, it's actually Marla and me who are the testing. Al and I were the ones who, who worked on this at the retreat.
Oh, I see.
But Marla.
It's Martha and I that are on that.
Oh, okay.
You're committed.
So I think Martha and I need to hold some meetings and more in some meetings.
Kim.
Well, I was going to suggest, I think exactly that, that from a process standpoint, why don't we ask, could we ask Dan his thoughts? And then at least see what the packages that are offered by either Dan, V S B A, or this third organization. So that we have an idea of how long they consider that process to take. You know, where, where do they start? Do they start after we've defined what we're looking for? Because I think we as a board want to define what we're looking for in a superintendent. And at least in our experience when we were, you know, found Mark, that group that was the search committee wasn't just the board. That was a couple of people from the board and people from the community and people from the buildings. And so we as a board don't have a job description. We, you know, we don't have some of the stuff that we might otherwise have if we were an operational district. So if they say this starts in August, we probably have some stuff we have to do before then.
Right.
And I, I just don't know. And I think Dan might inform that at least initially and then let us know where we could gather that other information.
So I think I'm hearing that Marla and I should meet. Possibly with Dan someday when he's going to be in district. Do you think you can try?
If I know in advance, I'll ask for time off.
And bring back a, a timeline proposal. How does that sound?
Good.
Okay.
I also have the last week of May off. So I can spend some time.
I just want to clarify, Kim.
On your vacation.
Kim said they, they found me, I didn't want to know that I wasn't wandering aimlessly on landscape. I wasn't lost. I don't know, just the way that came out.
Sorry. We happen to use V S B A. And I would say that having been through the search, we just need to make sure. It was a very good experience for us. I wouldn't have wanted to go through a superintendent search without services available.
And I think we feel.
Guide it and vet it and.
Yeah, and I think we.
Bring to you as a committee what is worth looking at.
Yeah, and I think we feel the same way about the search that Brian O'Regan led, that led to hiring Judy.
Yeah.
And it sounds like it was fairly similar.
So at this point, we're not going to make an adjustment on this?
Not yet.
Do you think if we sent this to you, could keep, should this be live on the blog spot? So at a meeting, we could open it up and just go in there?
Happy to put it there, but I would feel reluctant to post it with nothing listed under budget development, for instance.
Okay. Why don't I send it to you anyway, so it can be in the background?
Put CFO search.
People may react to us having no budget.
Well, no plans for when we're going to make a budget. A few things we could easily add to this that then would be public ready, but.
That's how we're going to save money.
Budget is determined by who we hire as a superintendent. Budget is determined by negotiations.
CFO.
Also, a few things that if I were posting this to the public, linkage will mean nothing to anyone who didn't go to the policy governance meeting. We could put.
Engagement.
It's wankish, right, we could change.
C E O search, we could put superintendent search.
I'll send it to you and you can play around with it.
We have it, anyway.
You have it.
It's a PDF.
Oh, yeah.
I probably can transfer it, but it might get all.
Okay, so the last thing we're doing in the school board business part of the agenda. Is to look at the two budgets, the one for the transition grant and the one for the Nellie May grant. These were set out, sent out as separate documents from Mark.
Oh, that's right, wasn't it?
Right.
Yes, so who, let's see, which one shall we start?
Documents, Mark is the name of the email.
Right.
Grant one.
It came on Friday, last Friday. So who, let's start with the. Two, let's start with the unified.
U U trackers.
Yeah, they're ours. Let's do the first one.
This one, see what happens.
Okay. You're on one or two?
The first.
One, okay, I'm on there.
So, so this is, this is what has already happened. So I really don't want to spend any time on that.
Right.
But it's informative so that we've all had a chance to look at it. If you scroll down, then we get to these two hundred and thirty thousand dollar grants. So Judy, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. So you see the description of the areas. So you see the description of the areas that have been identified as costs. And you see two grants. So you see the vendor, the date, the cost. The first grant, we're using first. So the Act 156 grant will spend that down first, which is why you don't see anything on the amount for the unified transition grant.
Yep.
So everything's coming out of the 156. And the budget on the far right, we're sort of best guess based on some history of your use of, history that you don't have, of use of consultants and reporting secretary and board stipends, just expenditures that we know are coming. Those are all up to you to change as you see fit. There's no fixed cost pieces to that. You know, on the, on the second page, as you see, like the new finance system, HR finance, we put $100,000 there. It might be $40,000. We're uncertain at this time. So we just put resources under areas that we thought would be costly. So to date, you've used $11,798.88 out of your Act 156 grant, leaving you a total of $118,201.12. And then you still have your $130,000 because you spent $20,000. That was one of your $20,000s for the study grant. So that leaves the balance of those, the addition of those two numbers, about $250,000 remaining. And then you see how we estimated your consultant fees. Yep. So it's pretty self-explanatory. It's just a shot in the dark, really, as far as budget's concerned, of where the actual amount is going to land. But it's not a lot of money, so it doesn't need a lot of attention. But you will have permission tomorrow night to borrow. So you do, if there are some large costs that you need to borrow for, we can do that if necessary.
Do you, yeah, Keely, go ahead. Sorry.
My question is actually about the final line under the notes. This is something that came up in the survey that we did at the Red Committee.
Right here, Keely.
People are like, where is the administration going to be located? And presumably, that has to be decided after staffing levels for the administration. Do we know where that's going to fit in the work plan and how long in advance you need to decide things like, we're not using this building, so we want to rent it out? Or is this something that's going to be actually decided in the first year of the new district or...
So I can tell you a little bit about, the SU is now, the SU building is not allowed by statute for us to own. So we rent it right now. We haven't even had those beginning conversations because there really hasn't been a budget planned to think about what it could look like. So I think that might be, your conversations may begin during budget planning as far as the when. In the meantime, we're going to house where we are and make it work. And I think this year will be a good opportunity for us to kind of understand, you know, what we're going to need in the future. Mark and I can help inform that. I, I don't foresee needing to have a new superintendent's office right out of the get-go when you have other costs, I think, to consider. But that's your decision to make. And you might begin exploring during budget season, can the Essex Town Superintendent's Office be expanded? Or can be, can there be a second story built on it? And all the questions that you'll put somebody in a committee to work on and ask. And begin, you know, considering that as far as it's, that's the most central location in the, in the system right now. And it's, it's wonderful because it's, has, it's on a campus with two schools. So there's some really nice features to that. And you might need to, say, for the first year, the business operations happens out of 51 Park Street. Some of the educational planning and opportunities happen at Essex Town Superintendent's Office. And then how important, you'll go through a process of probably determining how important it is to put everybody under the same roof and how costly it's going to be. So there's, there's a ton of decisions. But I think if we can make it work this year in two separate offices, I personally don't see a sense of urgency of having to have something happen in your first year of operation.
It is on the list of things to do, buried by things that are obviously more urgent. But I think it's just one of, just, I think we were, where we'd want to start the conversation if a committee does form, which it probably will, Judy, is like, what is the central office? And I, I would avoid talking about brick and mortar and roofs and drains. I would talk about the central office as a service organization that serves our communities. And with that comes the certain, some discussions around what an organizational chart looks like. Like what are the, what's the human resource we need to serve our communities well? And I think when we have those discussions, we'll start to maybe get a better sense of, you know, what that building or buildings look like. But I, I wouldn't want to start it with a question of, like, where do we move to? Because I think we miss an opportunity to talk about the bigger picture in terms of what the district service is all, all about. I can tell you that the ground feels, is rumbling under people's feet on this one. Not only in terms of the superintendent. I'm talking about the internal, the learning community of educators and staff and like what's going to happen around the building as superintendent. And so I think that, you know, being really transparent, hate that word, but really clear about it, it's, it's important, but it's not something we're focusing on right this minute. It allays some of that concern that is out there, like, where am I going to be living? It just isn't a priority right now.
We've been really good about sharing, you know, where we need to be and sharing our space and availability and...
Yeah.
And frankly, in terms of the staffing model, that's a big reason we hired Dan was to help make those recommendations so that Judy and Mark can't be divorced from him to some degree, which I think they very much need to be. But I think it's right that what the staffing looks like should drive what the building need is.
We can do a lot of escape without...
Yeah, that's right.
You guys have that new platform, too, right?
Could I just share something with the board for two minutes?
Something, recamp, camp, recamp.
Is it on the topic of the budget?
I like it.
The topic of what you've just talked about and buildings and everything.
I would like to, I don't think it's appropriate to get into that discussion tonight. So can you save it?
It's an important subject that everyone needs to be aware of. But I can postpone it.
Okay. Thanks.
Was there another grant? Was there another document?
Yeah, keep going. Well, all right. First of all, mine are all lined up. So I think if you keep going...
The last one is the Nellie Mae grant.
Mine are lined up, too.
So are there any other questions on the transition grant?
Yes. Well, I had a question on the new HR finance system. And typically, what we do, if it's a rent, buy, or whatever, there is a business case that's presented. And in part of the ethics, we were to have substantive, information about what this was about. I don't have anything, so...
It's still in, it's still in decision-making mode. That's just a placeholder that we have. We didn't spend it, we didn't buy anything, we didn't spend anything.
What a deal. We got you guys. Six fingers, nothing.
Just want to understand.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarity on that. That's just a placeholder and it's still, we're hopeful, I think, hopeful for the end of June, maybe for a recommendation there. But no, no, nothing like that will be decided without your involvement.
Okay. Well, I'm looking...
We'll have to vote to spend the money.
The money.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking for a business case to be presented.
Well, they're working on that. Yeah. So, but along those lines, something that's not in this budget is a student information system.
Yes.
And are, are you thinking we're going to be able to get away without spending any money on one? Or do you not know?
We don't know yet. We know it's important. We're wondering about if we do both in one year and what that looks like and can it be financed? And do we have the budget to do it? And do you want to borrow? And what are the costs? So all of that's also being explored. And Dan is...
And it's early.
It's early. And Dan is helping. But those are the two major finance, major technical systems that we're looking at currently.
Okay. Is it far enough along that it would have a placeholder, too? My worry is that we're up against our max without a placeholder for it.
Mm-hmm. I'm hoping it's going to be the other half of the $100,000.
But I was just being sensitive and then, and are incredibly grateful for Chris's services, but that, I will say, the 55 seemed big to me in the scope of the size of the budget otherwise.
We have to negotiate a brand-new contract.
That's negotiations. Part of it. And you've already spent...
It doesn't come to...
Yeah. You've already spent... Eight thousand.
No, and there's definitely, obviously, value to Chris's input. And there's, our model didn't use him at every session. It was more a resource.
We'll have a chance to...
We'll have a chance as a negotiating committee.
I'll include SIS, though.
But I think if we are looking at sensitivities to costs...
A placeholder for SIS?
Yes.
I'm going to add that right underneath.
Do we also need one for superintendent search consultancy?
Yeah.
Do. Marla?
That was what I was going to say.
The other consultants.
A placeholder for superintendent search on only the consulting fees, the advertising, how it's going to take.
Yep.
The superintendent search was under the other.
Okay. Let's go to the Nellie Mae grant. And so Judy, you want to talk through this?
So the way the grant finances came to us is they reserve $1,000 that you get later on. So it's a $10,000 grant, but we had $9,000. After I submit our report in November. Right. They hold that last $1,000 hostage. So, so the total will be $10,000. And you'll see what we've spent to date. Again, under, you know, these are estimates and placeholders. We can add and change as we see fit. And I think that you're thinking about hiring or creating a stipend for someone. And so that, once the board makes that decision, I'll add that in. So every time you see these, it'll reflect really what you're planning. But this was just a placeholder as a way of saying, you have $10,000. $9,000 has been received to date. And this is, you know, what's been spent to date.
So I think it would be helpful, once a month in the board notes, to put these in, not for discussion unless...
Just updates?
Somebody sees something that they want to talk about. But I think we should see them on a monthly basis.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want it always like the first month or the third?
Sure. Why not? First meeting of the month.
First meeting of the month.
Since we're at first meeting of the month. Now Liz, did you, we probably can't make a decision about the stipend tonight.
I can review it. What do you think the process should be? It's a four-point contract that I drafted to retain the services of Ben Dickey to be the point person for the Nellie Mae grant. It became clear to us very quickly that we needed that person on board for legal reasons. Keely and I can't communicate directly, for example, with principals of schools because of our role on the board. And Ben is, this is what he does. He's going to be fantastic at doing this work and, and helping us along the way. So it's, should I go over it? Should I share it with the board for the next meeting? Should we talk about the amount?
I think we probably can't make a decision tonight because it's not warned.
So you can put it on, you can review?
So let's put it on the next agenda. So if you could send it to Mark.
Yes.
Send the contract to Mark.
Okay.
And we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting to make a decision.
Okay.
Good. Okay. So we're on time, maybe?
I apologize. It was related to being prompted by Ben Dickey. Did we end up with a recorder for our regular meetings?
We do not yet have one.
Okay.
We're still looking. It was in the, it was in the transition budget.
Yeah, believe it.
We do have RETN, though. Thank you, RETN.
Thank you, RETN.
Okay. So let's move to the transition updates. Mark and Judy?
Just saw you last Tuesday, so there's not a lot to update. But I can, I'll share a little bit about, we did, I think we told you folks last Tuesday that we were meeting as a combined leadership, or combined leadership teams. Judy had invited us to attend a session within last, last week. And it was a good opportunity to sit down with each other. Didn't get into anything too deep because we didn't have the time. And it really was our first sort of step into the conversation post-November vote to merge. But what came out of that was a small, little group that I'll be facilitating with members of Judy's leadership team and members of mine to start thinking about the, what we can, what, what steps we need to take to sort of reculcate our thinking around what does a merged leadership structure look like in terms of cultural aspects of our work, leadership styles, resources that we, we bring to bear to, to, to move educational initiatives forward, how we do our work? And to start thinking about that long-term. So not just over the next couple of months, but sort of starting to develop a plan on, in our future meetings together, what is, what does the work look like? And how do we change structures, if you will, to impact on the work, especially during this transition period? So it's no surprise that Judy's team that she works with is four times bigger than Essex Town's. And what we come to realize is that it's not about the strength of numbers. It's about the initiatives that we have on our plate and how do we restructure our, our leadership services to be able to impact on the different bodies of work that we need to be engaged in. So I'll be meeting with them at group next week. We have good representation from both Essex Town and CCSU, including Westford. Not including Westford. I don't think that your principals are two of 10. Mars is at 11:10. But that's okay. We have central office administration representing Westford. So we look for, I look forward to that meeting and starting to set a plan that will come back. Would sort of like that rapid, rapid design model we talked about last Tuesday, assembling a small group of people to flesh out some ideas and bring back to the larger group of leaders to share those, those recommendations with you. So that'll be happening in the next week or so. It's really the only update, other than the stuff that you're facilitating with Dan that I'm excited about.
Right. So Dan is coming May 9th, Monday, at 2:00. And so he'll be meeting with Ellen and Vince around IT structures that are currently in place. And then meeting with HR and finance folks around what it, what's the criteria they've been using as part of their search and reviewing that process. So he'll help guide that finance system conversation and HR system. And there was a third group he was meeting. Oh, CSIS group. So really immersing himself in really understanding what's currently in place between the two systems and then helping propose what else we might consider. So that meeting was set up for Monday, next Monday. I saw a splash, splash page for web design for the board site. I saw a splash, splash page for web design for the board site, so I think that's going to be shared soon, as far as what that's going to look like. So some work is happening in the background around web design. And that's pretty much, it's only been a week, right? It's about all that's new on the free camp point of engagement.
The other, the other piece, and I, I think it's appropriate for tonight's session, is for Judy or Martha to update us on the CFO search process, which is not part of the merger, but sort of is.
It's important.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Thank you, Mark. So, yes, we've met last week, and determined who we would interview and to extend the search advertisement, so that position is still open. We'll be interviewing this week, and continuing to take applications simultaneously, and hopefully be making a decision soon. So it's been great, I think we've worked really well together, it's been nice to see the, the two different cultures come together around what we need in a CFO moving forward, and I think that's been really beneficial for us.
The only thing that I would, would add in to what we've presented tonight is, the, our public is very interested in what's happening. Hard to determine that with our audience tonight, but people are interested, I think the Essex Reporter, I know that our friends at RETN and, and Lake Champlain Valley...
Access TV.
They will be joining with RETN, and, and they'll be here when RETN, Jude Campy. So that's great. So there's going to be an article, I'm told, next week in the Reporter. Colin visited us last Tuesday.
Yeah.
But in keeping with what Judy and I both do, is to let the board know if there's going to be media or press coverage of our work, that we'll do our best to keep you informed of that, so you're not reading an article and be surprised by it.
Right, so Colin interviewed me on Friday. I, I don't know when that article's coming out, but it was, uh, he just, as you can imagine, sitting in the audience and trying to figure out, when we're talking about the strategic distributed leadership plan, so I gave him a copy. So I think that'll just help him understand, as he's sitting there, following along about who to talk with, and where the work is, and some of the timeline around it. So I think he appreciated having that, and then followed up with Grant around questions on around the finance system, where we are in that process, so it's pretty much the essence.
Just there's, there's, no surprise, there's misinformation out there, and I don't know how you stay out in front of that, but, um, not based on what we're saying, but just people make stuff up.
Of course they do, because there's a vacuum, and it's a vacuum...
Always good, always.
And it's a vacuum that we frankly are going to take many months to fill, so, and people are going to have anxiety while that's happening.
Yeah.
Keely?
If anyone is getting specific areas of confusion or misinformation, like, we can do our best to share the available correct information.
I'll make sure that I fire something off to you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think that's good. Okay, um, all right, so I will entertain a motion that we move into executive session to discuss negotiations.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
So, at what time?
Do we move over there?
Yeah, wait. Well, I was just going to ask if you wanted to consider doing the rest of your agenda, so RETN, because you're not making any decisions out of executive session, and Jude can go home.
That's a good idea. So let's move to, um, meeting evaluation and next meeting agenda. So who, um, and to start us off, which isn't up there, I want to remind you that tomorrow night is the annual meeting, starts at six-thirty, it's at the high school. I think we should be prepared to sit down front, facing the audience that's in the auditorium. The moderator knows.
John will be there.
John will be there.
To date, we haven't found anyone to take minutes, so if we don't find someone, Marla will be doing that. Um, yeah, so...
Everybody else better take very good notes.
So, um, under the, yeah, under the board report piece, Kim and Brenton, and I don't know how you're going to do your piece, the two of you and I are all going to speak, so, you know, I will start with two or three sentences about how much we've met, and our project manager, Brenton's going to talk about where people should go during the transition time. Keely and Liz are going to talk about public engagement, and Kim's going to talk about the five principles that we've adopted to guide decision-making during this transition So, yeah. The agenda for the seventeenth, um...
I got two items for you.
Okay.
I've got, you need to bring back a contract for the point person for Nellie May, I believe you called it.
Yeah.
We also need to have the revised memorandum of understanding brought back.
Yeah. Maybe we'll have an update from the policy committee. I'm not sure what your schedule will be. We'll have the regular transition updates. Can anybody think of anything else that, maybe that will end up being a shorter meeting? Unless Marla and I have met with Dan before then, I'm going to try to schedule that meeting with Dan during the last week in May, since Marla has availability then, so I'll be emailing Dan to see if he thinks he'll be here that week, and to see if we can, because that would be so much better than keeping him here after you get out of work.
And we'd have enough time.
Yeah.
And we'd have to contain it to, like, two hours.
Well, I hope we're not going to meet for two hours. He isn't cheap.
Well, you know what I mean.
Right, yeah. So, okay, um, yes.
If you're thinking about other areas for updates, because there is the Nellie May engagement meeting on May eleventh, that...
Well, that is a Nellie May engagement meeting, though, right? That's what I heard tonight. This is raw, clear...
That's, that's correct.
Is facilitating a meeting, the first half of which is informing Nellie May information gathering, the second half of which is helping the principal from Essex High, um, get people involved in the proficiency-based grading requirements conversation.
Oh, so there's two pieces to that meeting?
So, the first is...
And what time does that meeting start?
Six o'clock.
So I'm going to do my best to be there.
And we're all invited, right?
Of course you're invited.
But I still don't know if I can come.
But we could update on what happens, presumably, by the seventh.
Okay, so...
That's a good, yeah.
Okay, good. Anything else for the agenda for the seventeenth?
Preview your annual meeting outcome, if there's anything...
Yeah, we could preview the annual meeting. Okay, um, so who, three takeaways from this meeting?
Oh, it's so close to last week.
I know.
Yeah.
So I would say, one is that we worked on our work plan for the various task teams. Can you scroll up?
Sure.
Yeah, not helpful.
Sue's presentation, would that be?
Yeah, that, that would be good. And that we actually adopted the guiding principles that we worked on last time, maybe. Does that sound good?
Preparing to start the policy work.
Yeah, I, I said that we, um, that we worked on the work plan for the various task teams, so that's, yeah. Is that good?
Yep.
Okay. Now, are we ready for executive session?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session to discuss negotiations, contract negotiations.
At eight thirteen.
Sure, motion made.
Andrea makes the motion, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And we'll ask Mark and Judy to stay.